To ask council if there's any questions on the C A O report.
Question?
Yes, thank you.
Just a question through to the C A O. Under community development, it talks about reviewing the hall and facility donation policies. So I just had a question about that. We had previously designated that kind of suite of policies to admin. And then I think it was actually you that had brought back the question of where the donation policy lies, if it lies with council or admin. And I kind of think it does lie with council and with choosing. So I was wondering with that, will that policy come back to council for review?
For your next council meeting, in fact.
Oh, amazing. Okay, thank you.
Yes, there's actually five policies in all that will try informing to two. One for minors' park and one for the community hall.
Okay, and this is regarding the deeds or the donation?
Donations, yes. So that revolves around the special presentation policy, the hall's policy itself. We have donations policies for minor park and feed a minors' park policy. And we also have a fumers' policy that revolve around that same topic. So I'll be combining them into two, one for minors' park and one for the hall.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the report? All right, C A O, is there anything in there in particular that you would like to highlight? Would you have a report in front of us that if there's anything you'd want to go down in particular?
Well. I guess I might just highlight a couple of ongoing things. You'll see the promo for our open house for next Tuesday. It's on our sign now, it's on our Facebook page, it's on our website. So maybe I had a couple minutes to deal, so we'll go through that tomorrow anyway. We have everything, I believe, arranged thanks to Karleen, Christie, Mike. Storyboards are ready to be printed. I'll be meeting with M P tomorrow just to go over the offsite levy stuff for that particular session. I would ask council to have any further comments on the budget survey. Please get them to me by first thing in the morning because we're ready to go to the public with that particular document. Thanks to our councillor Caldwell for comments.
I'm excited.
And yes, I was in politics for a little while.
There you go, discretion's the better part about it, right?
Fair enough. Other than that, the street banner is still up for the Legion and for Remembrance Day, which I'm perfectly fine with, but to be working with Kevin and see if we can get some ordered for holidays season.
Great.
Yeah.
May I ask, is the plan that they just stay there here, huh?
The arms?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, no, I thought just, no, the banners for the Legion?
No, no, we'll leave them up there for a little while till we have a replacement. Typically somewhere early December, we would swap them off for holiday banners. We just don't have any yet, so. Now that Kevin's back and I can get the exact measurements, we can order some and get them up. And we can leave them up till, say, January, late January, February, once we get to the Chinese New Year, Ukrainian New Year, et cetera, et cetera. Be very generic seasons greetings kind of thing. And then come summer, we'll put something a little more appropriate, welcome to Boulders, something, yeah, we'll work on something with Christie here. So other than that, I have a number of surveys in front of me right now from urban municipalities, safety codes, among others. I'm assuming council's receiving all of those surveys. It appears that they're placing very high importance on those, especially when it comes to council conduct and elections, et cetera. So I would suggest strongly that, as we did at the convention, please provide your comments to our association. I believe our money is now here from our grant. And since I haven't seen any formal announcement come, I guess I'm gonna have to contact our M P and see if she would like to do a joint announcement with us on that particular project so we can get it going.
Can I ask through the members to get one out? What's our timeline on that? When does it have to be completed by?
By March.
Yeah.
So that's a different conversation, and I have already spoken to the grant advisor in Ottawa on that. And I'm very confident that we can meet their criteria. As I had said right at the meeting, we now have our housing needs assessment, at least in draft form. So I'll be reviewing that and passing that on to council as well for review, which will put us in a position to be prepared to apply for any housing grants to council determine if that's already. As you see, the C M or C P crossing has been repaired, which I think we're all thankful for, at least anyone that uses that thing. I'm appreciative of Chris at C P for pushing that forward for me. We continue to work on a number of policies. And right now, Miss Federich and I are reviewing a complete redraft of our procedural bylaw, or your procedural bylaw. So you should see that coming before you very quickly. And I'll be in touch very shortly with my emergency management group in regards to session with our contractors regarding risk and hazard assessments. I believe the Director of Operations subcommittee doesn't need email arrange for tomorrow afternoon. We'll also say that appreciate Christie's help, but we've also put forward grant application or candidacy.
That's facts.
Yeah.
Did you not just derive?
Yes. If you come to my office, you'll see a sign that says, make it happen.
Yes, so. Yeah, I think that's probably covering it. The rest of it's obviously in there. We're prepped for our appreciation dinner Friday. Thank you to the committee members and to Miss Federich for her help with that. And onward and upward.
Excellent. All right.
Oh, I will mention that the bench was replaced, that had been damaged along the path.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
Yes, yeah.
That's great.
Okay.
All right, can we get a motion to receive the report?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Sure.
I move that council received the C A O report for information.
Thank you, so councillor Potry has made that motion. So any questions on the motion? Any discussion? Call question, all in favor, that's carried. We'll move on to the Director of Operations report. Again, this is in front of us. Does anybody have any questions on anything in the report?
I guess, if I may, through to the Director of Operations. If you, I know this has been, we're talking about a walk through 2021 roads and sidewalk projects, but could you just provide a little bit more background on this, just for us and anybody who might be watching?
Okay, typically, any roadworks or sidewalk roads has a two-year warranty.
Yeah.
So this is just reviewing and going over a final acceptance certificate for those roadworks. So we walk and look, the engineers and the contractors look for inefficiencies and cracks, any problems. They have to fix those before we sign off on it and the project is concluded and the warranty is then over.
Okay. So is this, this would really be ongoing, because there's ongoing work for roads every year? Or is this specific?
Yes, so next year will be the walkthrough on the 2022 roads.
Right, okay.
It's at the end of the warranty period, we have to accept, accept the works that's been done.
Okay, thank you.
So it is an annual thing.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I have a question regarding the damage that was done to this breakmark. The, those bowls are ones where the little kids play?
Yeah, yeah, and basically what happened is the bowls, two of the bowls are destroyed. And the steel top and the steel post that's welded on was actually, when somebody jumped on it, there was steel back, so we're gonna have to get a welder to re-weld those down. And I'm waiting for a price on the new bowls. The last one I replaced was $100, so they're about $1,000 for the bowls, plus the welding and installation.
That, just to comment, maybe, but that whole little kid section doesn't really work very well. My kid doesn't seem to care, he's gonna play.
Is this, this isn't the first time that someone's gone in there and done cameras?
This is about the 10th time.
Wouldn't it be a good idea to have cameras on there then, perhaps?
We have cameras. Unfortunately, we have them to record continuously. And we didn't, we made a point now of going in at least twice a week to check. But when the damage was done, it was about a week to 10 days after that we noticed it. So the report's over. So we changed our, the way we do business there. So we're gonna check it more often. So if there's damage, you can capture the, because the cameras are very good. We've caught a few from, I think, three to four.
Do we charge people with these?
It's reported through the R C M P and they take it from there. They talk to the parents. Most of the damage has been fairly minor. This is the most extensive, cost-wise. Some others were basically restaining a wall from some spray paint, broken off hand sanitizers, those kind of things that are very minor. But this one's quite major.
Because it just seems to me that if, by not following up and being a little more rigorous with it, we may be giving permission.
Well, the police do, I mean, I guess that's up to them to charge it if you use, there's no law that's gonna happen, I don't think. That's something I could talk to the R C M P about in future when people are caught. What are the, what's the recourse?
Yeah, wonderful, thank you.
I just have a question on that as well, then. With all of these costs, like, to replace or to fix things or anything, like, we're not, we're not doing an insurance thing or anything, though, like, this is coming out of, like, taxation or?
Yes.
Out of our operating dollars?
Out of our operating budget. Typically, our deductible is over $1,000. I think for some things it's $2,000.
Okay.
So to go through insurance and then see the rate increase, it's probably just. We have with vehicle stuff, if it's down to a certain amount, then anything under $1,000 or $2,000 is typically just on a mortgage and budget.
Thank you.
It is a bit of a balance, if I might, may I move to that? Because obviously, the more claims you make, more your premiums go up. So you do have to handle weight, cause and effect of those. So typically, anything under $5,000 or it's really not worth referring to insurance, but if it's larger, absolutely.
Yeah, it's just unfortunate that it keeps on happening, right, over and over again?
Very much.
And that it has to come from our operating dollars, it should go towards something better, rather than fixing something all the time.
Well, and because that particular park, if I might, has been, had a number of incidents of damage, and perhaps we need to put out a little bit of an A P B to say, you know, your tax dollars are having to prepare this part of the repeated damage, and anyone in the area, please keep your I O to report anything immediately to the R C M P and or the town office, right?
I think, I think that the idea of being, wanting to talk to parents and giving kids a pass presents a little bit of a challenge because it's, it's sort of giving the kids a pass to continue doing what they're doing, right? And, I mean, all the data sort of says that they will ramp up their, their behaviors, right? If they're not, if there's not consequences.
All right, it's tough now. All right, is there any other questions? If there's not, can we get a motion to receive the report, please?
Sure, I move to receive the Director of Operations report for information.
Excellent. So Deputy Mayor has made that motion. Any questions on the motion? Any discussion? Call question, all in favor, that's carried. We'll move on to the Coordinator of Legislative Services report. Again, it is in front of you, if there's any questions on that. There's no questions? Can we get a motion to receive for information?
Yes, I move to receive the legislative reports for information.
Excellent. So councillor Florence made that motion. Any questions on the motion? Any discussion? Call question, all in favor, that's carried. And then moving on, we've got the Culvers Fire Department report. Again, this is in front of you. And I believe that this is, is this one of our first reports that we've received from them?
My thinking is, yes, so I've asked the fire chief to try, if you may, to provide us with a regular report of ongoing work that the fire, that are finding, folks at the fire department are doing in emergency services. So this was the first, and it does just give you kind of a date and time of incidents that they've responded to. October, this is on October 7th to 24th.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on the other part? Go ahead.
Through the mayor to the C A O. Do you know what the good intent call is on the high chart? I'm not sure if you would know that, maybe it's a follow-up question.
Sometimes that can be a neighbor making a call when they see smoke and it turns out that somebody's got a fire in their backyard, in a fire pit, that kind of a thing, where the call is made with the best of intention, but there's nothing really to it. I make that as an assumption, though, I will say, and I certainly can check with the chief and make sure that is the correct definition of it.
Awesome, thank you.
Any more questions?
Just a comment, sorry, did you want to do either?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It's just, I guess, it's really awesome to see this report as part of our reports that we get to see and accept because it never has been before in part of our time. And I think that it's important to, as we move, to strengthen that bond between the fire department and the town. So I think this is really great, and I look forward to seeing more reports. I think it would be interesting if they included maybe some of the training that they were doing and what projects are maybe coming down the line. Because I guess, seeing this with the incident numbering and stuff, it doesn't, it doesn't get a tan to me. But, I mean, I do appreciate that they're sending the report because it's, quite frankly, it's the first time it's ever happened, and so it's, it's nice.
And if I might, I will add that I've also suggested to the chief and deputy that they will be coming in after the New Year to get the council over their budget request, which is something that hasn't happened either.
Yeah.
And I believe they were quite pleased with that.
Awesome, thank you. That's great. If there's no other questions, can we get a motion to receive the report? Great.
Thank you. I move that we receive the report as presented, as a motion, sorry.
Thank you. Councillor Florence has made that motion. Is there any questions on the motion? Any discussion? Call question, all in favor, that's carried. All right, so we're gonna move, and we have what is administrative inquiry that came from councillor Florence regarding the wetlands project. Councillor Florence, do you want to speak to this beyond just that you're looking for an update?
Yes, please, maybe. I just, yeah, so in your, in the Director of Operations report, I noticed that you included a little blurb about that, so I appreciate that I answered most of my questions. I guess, since this report has been submitted, has the walkthrough been done? Do we know when they did completion?
No, I, to councillor Florence through the mayor, I did contact our engineering services today, and they're still trying to pin it down. A lot of the work has been completed. What I listed there, I also had them overlay a good portion of the pathway, a hundred to 150 meters, somewhere in there, that was during the rainstorm. We went down the Natchitoches underwater, it was wet. So they have done that. So just trying to get a lot of these deficiencies out of the way.
Yeah.
There's a few deficiencies still in the electrical in the building. It's mostly housekeeping, the way the wiring is labeled for future. I believe that the bridge at Butler's has been completed. So there's only one or two minor outstanding. Our engineer did say that he wants to schedule a walkthrough either late this week or first of next week to get it, to get it all finalized.
Hey, thank you, I appreciate that. I think that the public is watching and they're very aware, and I've had so many questions about it. And so I appreciate your response to this and for getting some.
Sorry, one thing I don't think I included in there is, I did receive a report this morning with the lighting, that they're looking at two options, and that's either replacing the light fixtures or putting dimmers on them so that we can control the light.
Okay.
So that's one of two options that they're working on.
Okay. Okay, sorry, if I could, so the entire fixture itself?
Yes, well, the lamp head.
Okay, the lamp head.
Yeah, not the bowl. So they're looking at which would work better and which is more useful back there. So, but of course, that's not a garden space, so.
I guess that would be up to, I guess, to determine what would be?
Yeah.
Most efficient for them?
Yeah.
Being up there the evening using dimmer switches and things like that?
No, 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 it would be hell.
Tug bill, okay, let's go tug bill about that, okay?
If I may, I also, I think it's, I think it looks really nice from what we can see, and even with that hill being so low and the final grading being done on there. Yeah, it's really awesome, and I think it's really exciting, and I think the public are excited, and we're feeling lots of questions about it, so it's good to have this information with that on.
And looking forward to the next phases of the amenities.
Does anybody else have any questions on this? On that, great. Okay, would you like to take a motion to receive?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Sure.
That council received the wetlands project report for information.
Excellent. Councillor Florence made that motion. Any questions on the motion? Any discussion? Call question, all in favor, that's carried. All right, so we do have one R F D that was submitted by councillor Potry. Councillor Potry, I'm going to let you speak to your motion that you're putting forward.
Thank you. I move, I move that council director administration to draft a bylaw in accordance with the Clean Energy Improvement Programme that's provided by the Alberta government and provide a draft review by March 2024. So this program is a Alberta government-run program where it provides, what is it, provide an option for funding renewable energy on properties, and the money can go onto the property taxes, basically, as a short, sorry. It's voluntary, of course, to municipalities, property owners, like, no one has to do this. This is just an opportunity for people who say they may not be in the residence for 10 years to receive the payback on their investment, or to have to worry about transferring a loan to the new property owners. It just simplifies that process by letting the province manage and administer it on behalf of the municipality. So, yeah, so I think it's a good program to have, other than municipalities have it already. And I know with all the solar panels that are coming out of the colors and the guys, it's, it makes a lot of sense, I think, for people who, yeah, are in that boat, that can't commit to the long term, but still wanna repay that much of the energy, so.
Great, thanks. Does anybody have any questions for councillor Potry? We'll start with the Deputy Mayor, and then we'll move over to councillor Caldwell.
I guess this question's to administration through the chair. Will this have any financial impact upon the town with regards to taking away available funds that may be needed for operating our capital projects?
I might sue the mayor. I haven't dug too deep into this, honestly, but I believe this is really a flow-through program where we just collect the money and pass it on to the province that has no influence on our operating budget. It's outside of our operating budget.
It's wire, right?
Yes. But I will confer with that as part of the R F D when we bring it forward.
Okay, awesome. So I guess, yeah, just to be clear on that, that is, that the loan itself would be coming from the province and the municipality would be collecting the property taxes, and that's sort of the premise behind it?
That's all right.
Or thoughts of that, thank you.
Did you have another question?
That's what my question was, yeah. Thank you.
Councillor Florence.
Thank you. I guess, just to, just to add on to that, does it affect our borrowing capacity?
No, it should have no influence on it whatsoever.
Okay, and then that was an extra question, I just came up from that. But so I guess, so this is, so it doesn't mean that there's no implication, but there would be, like, the town would have to implement this program, so there would be an implication and a slight cost to that. So I guess, would there be a program administration fee with the town receiving interest off of it? And, yeah, I guess, is it, like, how does that work? So when you take, like, so somebody can add it to the property taxes, but it's over a 20-year thing, so how, like, it doesn't have an impact on our property taxes or things like that? Are we collecting interest, like? I mean, it's a little bit of a low-risk thing, actually, right? Because we're saying you can finance this at potentially, you know, the expense of property taxes may or may not be collected, but is there any interest that the town can make off? That it's a potential for that?
If the property, well, if there is outstanding repayments, it's collected, then when the property is sold to the new owners, right? And so it's, it'd be the same.
Sorry, that don't really answer my question. So like, in terms of, like, this is, this is a, like, a program that's being put out, like, who's, who's getting the interest payments then?
The property owner pays the interest on the loan.
Okay, so the town gets nothing?
We just are flow-through.
Okay.
We just administer, so it would, I believe it would take additional administration in our tax department to manage those particular payments. I do have some of my own question, by the way. If there are taxes to property tax and there's delayed with taxes, what does that look like? Does that become part of a taxes and arrears? So I don't know what the answer to this is yet, but if council's interested in the program and considering taking the opportunity to draw, draw the bylaw, or might put an R F D together, and we can respond in terms of what influence and impact that has on the, A, the operating budget, and B, administration.
My answer, this does look like an exciting program. But when you go to the Alberta website, it seems very ambiguous if they are doing it on behalf of the community of municipality. I wonder if we might be able to explore first, explore what it looks like, how it operates, and then make a determination to do a bylaw associated with it. Just to, in the event that, I mean, we, we think it may be, but if it is the municipality that's carrying that debt, and they pay it off, I mean, we, we did that through Community Futures as well. We went into partnership with them, and they carry the debt to enhance our homes for businesses, right? Small businesses, right?
If people choose to participate.
If people chose to participate. And so if it looks like that, this might be quite a, quite a larger debt for us to carry. But I guess my, my point is, is we're not absolutely certain, and I've been through the website. I would love to have more information to make a good decision. I would love to have more information to make a good decision. Um, sort of drafting up a bylaw and um, uh, you know, just doing an update is quite time-consuming. Could we get that information first?
Great. Um, is there any other questions? So, I, um, just, I guess we'll go into a little bit of discussion here. And I do hear that there may be a petition to postpone.
For more information.
For mo, for more information. Um, so that would be an amending motion. Um, so if you would like to make that motion at this point, would you balk into?
Thank you.
Um. Do you want to do that?
I do.
Thank you. When would you like to postpone it to?
Um, responding to this motion, uh, for more information, um. We're coming up to getting close to Christmas. I'm not sure Administration is able to uh pull that information together. I don't think it's just a phone call. I guess I would defer to Administration to let me know what they think of uh our reasonable timeline would be.
I think we'd be able to access this reasonably by the first meeting in January. Which is still a lot of time to develop a bylaw. Council Potry's timeline of March.
Great, does that work for you? Uh, Council Caldwell?
It does, yes, thank you.
Alright, so Council Caldwell uh has moved that Council postponed Council Potry's motion to the January second, twenty twenty four regular meeting of council.
Um, for more information, please. Well, how the program works.
To determine any impact on the municipality, the potential impact on the municipality, if that's not reasonable, Councilor.
Um, yeah. Um, we don't have to be specific to whether it's financial impact, just the impact.
Uh, to.
For Administration to present a report.
Just to provide council with any potential impact on the municipality. Does the report outline any potential impact on the municipality?
Thank you, thank you for writing that motion for me, that's worth it, thank you.
Good.
Alright, so um I'm just gonna read this motion here. So Council Caldwell moving, Council postponed Council Potry's motion to the January second, twenty twenty four regular meeting of council to provide council with a report outlining any impact on the municipality. Alright, so that, since this is an amending motion, we're, we're focusing on this motion right now. Um, if this is defeated, then we'll back to the main motion, okay? So, um, is there any questions on this motion to postpone? Is there any, do you have a question or discussion? Okay, um, we'll go to discussion, we'll start with with you, Council Florence.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, so just um through the mayor to to council, I guess, just um, if if this is something, there, there's a lot of programs out there that, you know, that people can do their green upgrades with. Is this really somewhere a municipality needs to be, um, have their, have their hands in? So while I was researching this, um, I looked at a number of other towns and cities that have it. Um, one of the closest ones to us is the village of Sterling. So pulled up their policy, which was just done in twenty twenty three. Um, it's actually Alberta municipalities that administers it through, like, the, the government, right? So they're the ones that handle it. Um, it was still, for me, it was still unclear on the questions I had about, you know, the program, like, the program inventory, the um, things like that, and so, um, it would be really interesting to see that come back. Um, but I, I believe that there's enough other programs out there to assist individuals in making these, these changes for their home on their own without the municipality getting involved. So, that's all, thank you.
So, um, any other discussion on, on the motion to postpone?
Um, I, I, I don't know that, um, if, if, I guess, if we postpone it and we get more information on it and people are still opposed to it, then it's just a waste of time with Administration. So, we're gonna look into the draft anyway. We're not, we're not passing it by a lot of our shoulders, looking at a draft on March twenty four. Um, I, I would assume um that we would have information as to what is required from, which is not included in the motion, but um, yeah, it seems like the same thing to me, so. Yeah.
If I may respond, thank you. Um, I think that um this would be preliminary to doing a draft bylaw, just getting the information required in order to, to prepare them. And so, getting the information required to prepare one, but presenting that information to us first before taking that extra step forward is what my thought process was behind introducing this motion. Um, and, and I, I agree uh with Council Florence in so much as the lack of information that's available on this. I am excited at the opportunity to be able to move forward with this if it's not a significant impact to our community.
Um, any further discussion? Uh, great, so we're, we're voting on the amending motion, so the motion to um to postpone. Um, so I'm going to ask if there's any more, any questions, discussion? I'm going to call a question now, all in favor of postponing? Uh, opposed? The motion is carried. Alright, so now we're going to move on, um, to, we're, we're moving on to the um, the Council Committee's bylaw, four four six dash twenty three. Um, we are going to be looking at the third reading of, of the bylaw. But before we get to that, I'd like to ask if there's any um additional feedback that people have for this.
Go ahead.
Yes. I would like to make a motion. Um, I moved that Council instructed Administration to make the following changes to the Council Committee's bylaw, number four forty six dash twenty three. Under the Business Engagement and Retention Committee um composition, I'd like to see that changed to the composition to be two members of council in place of the mayor and two members of council. Also, under the Leadership and Governance section, that previously spoke about the mayor being the committee chair, I'd like to see the committee chair to be determined at the first committee meeting following the organizational meeting. And then in the commu, uh, sorry, in the Communications section, I'd like to see the committee chair be the one to inform council that's referencing the mayor currently.
Did, did you want to speak to it at all, or?
Um, I just think that I have a hard time with a council committee having three council members on it because it really feels to me like a decision can be made before it actually hits council. So that's why I wanted to change it to the two committee members being from council. In addition to that, um, removing the mayor and just placing that with generic counselor, I think that just doesn't, it, I think it just leaves for more options at the organizational meeting, so you're not putting somebody designated in that position. You get people that are wanting to be there on that, and then just having the committee chair report back to um council just kind of lines things up to kind of make it a little less, a little more generic in the position of the members of that committee.
Great, thank you. Um, does anybody have any questions about the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call a question, all in favor?
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment, yes. Of, of what, of what, uh, Deputy Mayor's report.
Okay.
Also, so all in favor, I'll just ask that one more time?
Sorry.
Um, that's carried, thank you. Um, does anybody else have any feedback before we move on to the third reading? Yes?
I do, Madam Mayor, we have a couple of, uh, we have a minor error in, in the bylaw that we discovered yesterday.
Okay.
And uh, Miss Bederidge would like to make a minor amendment just for clarification. So, she's going to bring those up for you so that you can see the entirety of these changes. So, under item four, Accountability and Reporting, uh, she would, uh, we had a numerical error. Um, it should be four point four, we had two four point threes. Um, she also would like to add to the Legislative Service Director for Corporate Record just to be clear as to where those uh adopted meeting minutes are to be provided. So it's a matter of clarity. And the first line on item six point three, um, I'm really not sure how it ended up there. Uh, I believe it was supposed to have been removed and uh re-located in this document. And we discovered it yesterday, looking at terms and discovered that this line really, as the old song goes, one of these things does not belong here, and that top line does not belong in this particular bylaw. So, we would like to have it removed. So, those are the two amendments we're proposing from Administration.
Excellent, thank you. Um, okay, um, is there any questions on that before we look at the motion? Um, would anybody like to make that motion for those, those amendments here?
That's a great motion.
Great, thank you.
Uh, that council accepts the proposed amendments, clarification of the procedure in section four point four, and deletion of an incomplete sentence in section six point three to bylaw four four six dash two three.
Great. Um, is there any um questions on the motion? Any discussion?
Good catch.
Yes. Call a question, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. And then, we will now move down to uh the third reading. Uh, um, it would be the bylaw, would anybody like to make that motion? I will make that motion. Here we go. So I know that the town of Colts provides third reading to bylaw four four six F two three as amended. Um, is there any questions on the motion? Any discussion? Call question, all in favor? That's carried. Great. Moving along pretty good pace, thank you guys, this, this is excellent. Uh, right, so now we'll move into our, our reports here, I'll start out with mine. Um, again, it is in front of you, so I, I won't go through a lot of it. But, um, I just wanted to do a little bit of a shout-out to the high school volleyball teams that played in zone last weekend, zones last weekend. Um, and I think that they're, I'm not sure I know that the girls' season is done, but I'm not sure about the boys, but uh that was, I think that they had a good time with that. I just wanted to thank the Legion for their Member's Day ceremony, it was really nice to be there um and participate in that. Um, the other thing that I, I wanted to just update on is that I was reappointed to the Alberta Municipality Safe and Healthy Communities Committee, and so I'll have my first meeting uh next Friday up in Edmonton. But otherwise, um, I think you'll, you can see on there that I've been working, I guess, just another thing is working on the procedural bylaw um with Legislative Services to get that in a place where we can come to council and then we can all go through that and discuss that together. So those are kind of my, my big things, I think, that have, that have happened. Um, yeah, does anybody have any questions? If not, um, maybe what we'll do is we'll just go through all of them and then we'll do a bulk motion uh for all the reports. Um, so next we have Deputy Mayor Ackerman's.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, wicked, I just want to recognize the Legion for the job well done. I'd also like to welcome our new Director of Community Services, Kristi Henning, to the team. I'm excited to see your impact in this position. Um, beyond that, the only thing that I have coming up that wasn't listed on there is I'm going to be filling in for Council Florence in the Highway Three Twinning Development Association meeting tomorrow. And then beyond that, um, I guess everything's kind of listed there.
Excellent, any questions for Deputy Mayor Ackerman's? None, we'll move on to uh Council Caldwell.
Thank you. You know, I um, I too would like to recognize the Legion for the wonderful work that they did. I did not write that in my report because I knew that absolutely everybody else did that. But I should have done it anyways. Uh, but I also wanted to recognize the Colers, Colers Parks and Recreation and all of the remarkable volunteers who made the Turkey Bingo such a success issue. Um, as well as, I wanted to bring, uh, not only recognition, but I wanted to bring uh to attention the Colers Elementary School Parent Council and um, what is it called, the Friends of CES Society? Um, for their Santa's Gone Moonie event. And I did have a poster attached to that, but um, I'm not sure that it's available to open. Uh, just to, just to ask if, um, can people please support this with donations? It's um such a well-attended event and um, yeah, as I mentioned about the community in Luton, they're talking about this event in Colers for kids, so I think that's kind of cool. Um, as for the rest, you can see all the meetings that I get attended and, and the upcoming uh meetings as well. Any questions on that? That's great, thank you.
If I might, we have actually taken donations for that particular
I see, yes.
event, and uh, Sienna cleaned it out, but we have taken out a great number of them, so that's good.
Excellent.
That's very good.
If it's on my watch, it'll probably up to the beginning of my entire horizon here, so.
Alright, we'll move on uh to uh Council Florence.
Uh, thank you, so for my report, it's Sherman Street, so we have the Emergency Advisory Committee. Um, we've had a bunch of discussions, um, had a policy review committee for Community Futures, which was interesting. Um, and then my first starter, M S D A, um, so really looking forward to um continuing to meet with that committee. And then, as Deputy Mayor Ackerman's mentioned, um, he is going to sit on the Highway Three Twinning Development Association for me tomorrow because it is, it conflicts with Community Futures, so I will be at that one instead. And that's about it, thank you.
Great. Um, any questions? Nope. And Council Potry?
Thanks, Madam Medina. I too would like to recognize the Colers Legion, I think everyone said it now, uh, the town um staff and volunteers who helped host that ceremony and of course, almost observed, continue to protect our freedoms. Um, I would also like to thank the Friends of CES Society and all their volunteers who put the, including my wife, who was there. Putting the jury in, but I heard, I heard you guys were really fast at reading, at reading the numbers.
Oh, I thought I was slow.
Oh.
Scott was giving me the balls too fast.
Yeah, my, my vibe is just like, I could barely keep my eyes. Um, yeah, I'm looking forward to my first Green Acres Board meeting on November twenty ninth, and I didn't know there were so many Christmas penders that they did, like, so I haven't yet any of those other.
There's a few of them.
Share readings.
Yeah, that's my report, thank you.
Great, any, um, any questions? If there's none, can we get a motion to pursue the reports?
I'm going to accept the council, receive the information for the council reports as requested.
Excellent. Also, Deputy Mayor's made this motion, any question on the motion? Any discussion? Question, all in favor? That's carried. Alright, so move down now to our correspondence. Um, does anybody have anything that you would like to talk about within the correspondence? If not, um, can we get a motion to accept or to receive the correspondence?
I'm going to, um, I'm that Council received for information the correspondence as presented.
Excellent. Uh, any questions on the motion? Any discussion? All question, all in favor? That's carried. Alright, moving on to other business, um, we've got the Council Committee's calendar, and maybe I can turn this over to Administration to, to talk about this.
Thank you, Mayor Montana. As we move forward, especially now that the Committee's bylaws have been passed, obviously, council's commitments have increased significantly. Um, and Miss Bederidge, um, was kind enough to put together a proposal calendar of meeting dates so that those council members that are affiliated to these committees and those members of the public have a foundation to work from. Um, this is to attempt to avoid overlap, and I'll pass it on to Ms. Bederidge to provide any further background on this particular piece.
Sure, thank you. Um, so quick overview, generally speaking, full council meetings are on Tuesdays, so regular council meetings and committee of the whole. We stopped with council's feedback, in the last meeting, we plugged in a couple of committee of the whole meetings. Uh, the intent is to overbook and should there be a meeting that needs to be canceled, they can cancel it. So, just provides an outline. Um, communities of council are proposed for Thursdays. Um, that is to provide us with an administrative date to help prepare for the meeting between a council meeting and a council committee meeting. And some of the ad hoc committees are added to Mondays, again, which can provide us with the ability to prepare for another meeting. So, just helps council members of Administration um ebb and flow throughout the year between council and committee meetings is the intent. However, should there be any requests from the communities, change the dates, uh, they're more than welcome to do so, and they can just reach out to C A O and discuss what that could look like so we can arrange for administrative support.
Great, thank you. Um, does anybody have any questions?
I might provide a little bit extra to this, so most of the terms of reference that you just So most of the terms of reference that you just approved as part of the committees' bylaw include, uh... Include an area where the committees typically would set meeting dates and times as their first meeting after the organizational meeting with council. And that still is the case. This really just provides a bit of a guideline. We don't want it to be a hindrance to people joining committees, but we also want both potential committee members as large and council members to recognize that this now does add significantly to the pilots for council and for administration and that this at least provides a foundation to work from so that they recognize that there are a lot of days potentially booked and we don't want, you know, two or three committees booking the same night and then we have issues with location logistics, staff support, resources, et cetera. So thank Ms. Bederich for this. And once we get all the committees up and running, we will tighten this up and fill it in appropriately so everyone has it. And yeah, happy meetings.
That's great, thank you.
Happy meetings.
Alright, so with that, would somebody like to make a motion to approve and implement the calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Sure.
I make the motion that we approve and implement the twenty twenty-four calendar, council and committee meetings.
So Councilor Calbell has made the motion. Is there any questions on the motion? Any discussion? No question, all in favor? That's carried. Then we're going to move on to fourteen point two, which is the appointments to the council committees that we haven't done yet. So I'm going to move that the following internal committee appointments be made for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four term. So for the Business Engagement and Retention Committee, it will be me, Mayor Martina, and Deputy Mayor Ackerman's. The Community Celebration Committee, it's Deputy Mayor Ackerman's. The Community Enrichment Advisory Committee, it's Mayor Martina and Councilor Portree. Community Housing Advisory Committee, Councilor Calbell and Councilor Portree. Staff and Volunteer Appreciation Committee, Councilor Calbell and Councilor Florence. Wetlands Enhancement Advisory Committee, Deputy Mayor Ackerman's and Councilor Portree. So when I was going through this, I looked at just some of our other committee appointments to our external ones and a lot of this I kind of mapped out before when we had done those other appointments. And I use that as a guide to just kind of see where it might best fit for people. And then just noting that we did have the two additions of the when the Intermedia Support Committee with Accounting, that was one that we didn't have recorded on there before, as well as I didn't have the Business Engagement or Retention Committee. So I just broke that up based off of that. So I have made that motion. Does anybody have any questions on the motion? Yes.
So just on the number five, the Staff and Volunteer Appreciation Committee. So this will be going into my third year serving on this committee, so
Okay.
I feel like there could be a shakeup on there.
Sure. Is anybody, is anyone interested in that committee?
I love it, but I've been on two years as well.
Yeah, I just think we'd be good to maybe just let somebody else do it. But I mean...
Some new ideas at table.
Yeah, certainly, whatever that looks like. So I don't know if I want to read or not.
Yeah, is there any interest from... There's no interest from anybody? I guess it's me, Scott.
Yeah.
Um, just before that, would you like to trade up for the Celebration Committee?
Um, I would trade up for the community, or the, sorry, which one? What are you looking at? The whistle?
Um, the Celebration Committee.
Uh, sure.
Yeah, if you want to do that, yeah.
Sure.
Make a change.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. At this point in time, because we haven't changed our procedural bylaw, I accept your friendly amendment. At future times, we will not be doing that anymore. Okay, so we've made that adjustment there. Is there any further questions on this?
That's good.
Okay, any discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, the last thing that we have here is the Emergency Advisory Committee meeting minutes. And again, I believe that those are in front of you. Does anybody have any questions on these? If there is not, yes.
If I'm making my routine, I don't have a question. I just wanted to point out that the reason these aren't in the correspondence is that the advisory committee, and obviously this is their first meeting, and they'll have another one in early spring. Of course, we know that through the regional emergency management program that we're currently working on to get set up, there will be a regional advisory committee and a regional emergency management agency. But at our first meeting of our local emergency management advisory board, we did discuss the regional program and its development. And the committee did make a motion with a recommendation to council that appears under item four D, that the committee recommends to town council that the town of Colurs maintain a local emergency management agency once the regional emergency management program is initiated. So I bring that to you for your attention. I did also bring that up at our regional meeting last week. And we are still working through some of the finite details of the bylaw regionally and the setup of the agency and the advisory committee, which now looks... This is a bit foreshadowing and this position needs to change, but it does appear it will be likely that one member from each representative council's, council member will sit on the advisory committee for the regional emergency management program. And that the agency will be structured from those within our member municipalities who have strong skill sets in those agency components, communications, et cetera, logistics, operations, those kind of things. So I did bring up the fact that my committee or our committee had wanted to maintain its own local agency. At this point, really, the group didn't, there were some in the group that thought that was actually a good idea. And I had suggested there was some value to that in that we could continue training on a local level for some of our local staff. I've spoken to Alberta Emergency Management and they suggested that we could do it with a six-position approach to the development of an agency, which means if we can set or identify six members of our staff and our community to form that agency, that we can continue to keep those members trained, at which point they can also provide support for the regional agency and in case of an actual emergency, fill in support as required. And I think there's some value to that all around that does keep our own staff engaged in emergency management preparations and it does provide support on a regional level if we ever do get involved in a major regional emergency. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And once we, we will be filling out our agency anyway because none of the bylaw or appointments have been completed from the regional perspective. And we should have one placed on the last night and we had somebody coming that could fill in one good component of our agency as she's sitting at your far left right now. So we'll engage her in our communications portfolio and our local agency and get that set up in the interim. And yeah, and as I said earlier, our emergency management members will be getting an email from you soon as I get it from Trace about a two-hour meeting to go over risk and hazard assessments for our municipality to form part of the overall program. Thank you, Mayor Martina.
Great, thank you. If there's any questions, say something.
Thank you. Given that that was a recommendation before to council, would we require any action from council to move this forward? To continue moving this forward?
At this point, I would suggest we hold tight until such time as the criteria and the bylaw and terms of reference for both the, for the regional management program bylaw and the terms of reference for that advisory committee and agency are completed. And once those are approved, then councils, should they wish, could still pass a motion at that point to maintain their own agency. We have to figure out how we do this through bylaw and it will take a bylaw amendment likely to be able to facilitate. But for now, I wanted to make sure that it was brought forward quickly, it wasn't lost in the shuffle. And as we go through this, I think it's important that I get our own agency up and running quickly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bart. Thank you, just sort of the mayor to the CEO. I appreciate what you're saying and I would agree with you on this to get our own thing going. So you mentioned other communities thought that was a good idea, is nobody else seeking their own local agency?
I guess that's yet to be determined. I didn't, I wasn't there at the beginning of this process and I'm not that shy, so typically I'll ask questions that nobody else will ask or ashamed to maybe. But that's one I thought was obvious and I have a feeling that it's a mixed group of emergency professionals, frontline firefighters and the emergency management directors and C A Os, who are neither of the above typically. So we have a different perspective on what this looks like. And yeah, from a regional perspective, this whole thing lays out, I think, nicely and it provides a great deal of support across Lefford County and through those municipalities. But there may be times where an emergency is localized in a municipality and the declaration of a state of local emergency is still allowed to be declared within our own municipality that has no impact on the regional municipalities, in which case I think it would be us to maintain an emergency management agency to deal with something like that. And I guess there's a number of examples, none of which are pleasant, but say an airplane fell from the sky into the middle of Colhurst or tornado touched down in the middle of Colhurst or we had some massive overland flooding. Trained around. I don't want to really use that one because it's sort of obvious, but you understand where I'm coming from. So even once the regional bylaw is approved, we will still have the ability to declare a local state of emergency. And to me, and the regional program will still be there to support us even in that event. But I do think there's value in still maintaining our own agency as well and I think it just protects not only our residents, but it adds value to the entire regional program.
Okay, are there any other questions?
You know, actually, no, I think, thank you.
Good. Can I get a question?
Definitely. I'll move that council receive the Emergency Advisory Committee meeting minutes for information.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor has made that motion. Any questions on the motion? Any discussion? All question, all in favor? That's carried. And then finally, a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, okay, you go.
No, John. Who's just making the motion?
Wow.
Are you making a question? Go ahead.
Thank you, mine is that it's me adjourned. The regular meeting of council is out on Tuesday.
Any questions on the motion? Any discussion? A question, all in favor?